Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of Monday, July 1st, 2024, to order, and ask that you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral soundness.
Clerk Tammer, please call the roll.
Hill.
Here.
Penko.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Hark.
Here.
Udara.
Absent.
Vastito.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Verimus.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Item two is receipt of written communications from the public. Clerk Tammer, have we received some communications?
We did, Mayor. I think it is a total of seven. Let me just double-check. They're posted to written communications on our agenda, and I just wanted, if you don't mind, just to give an announcement and give some information, because I think there was some confusion tonight on how written communication works. And I definitely want to make sure the voices that want to be heard were heard. So, I think we have everyone. I checked everything till about five, so anything that came in after five, if something came in, was not posted. So, I just want to make sure that we're, that everyone that got to be heard has been heard. So, it's an agenda. Written communication is an agenda item that people submit when they like it posted for a specific City Council meeting. Many time residents email council members of what they support or oppose. That doesn't always mean they want it listed publicly. Some residents are just emailing their thoughts and opinions and don't have an intent of posting it publicly. Some residents aren't able to come, so they give, to give a public comment, so then they submit it under written communication. Then there's residents that like to do both, and some want it definitely posted as an agenda item. We're not able to understand what a resident wants unless the correspondence indicates that it is written communication for that agenda. I definitely would not want to post something that a resident emails to us that they never intended it to be posted publicly, and from my understanding, that has happened in the past. So, we have had people say after we've posted it, we didn't want that to happen. So, please, in the future, just make sure that you really put in there that it's supposed to be posted, because I definitely want to include it for those voices that want to be heard. I guess that's it. So, if anyone has any questions, again, make sure it's by 5:00 PM that day, and if anyone has any questions, just let myself or Deputy Clerk Malone know. And those emails should come, it says on our city website, to myself or Deputy Clerk Malone. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And I would encourage, if you're sending them in, to do it, don't wait till 5:00 because some of us up here might be doing other things between 5:00 and 7:30 and not see it. That all being said, are there any other written communications, written communications that any one in the audience has that they would like to submit to the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for anyone to address the council on any topic that he or she may so choose. We allow three minutes for public comment. When your name is called, I ask that you step to the back microphone, not the podium here, but the one behind it. Adjust it as you deem fit, or grow into it, that might take longer, but state your name. Address is optional. Sometimes, address helps us get back in touch with you later. So, Clerk Tammer, has anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes, Mayor. Mike Crameroso.
If you'll step to the microphone, state your name and/or address. I should say, name and optional address, yeah.
My name's Mike Crameroso. I live at 301 South Kennelworth. It's the Frank Lloyd Wright House.
All right. If you'll raise the microphone and come a little closer, so we can hear better.
How's that?
Better, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm speaking on the Pearlie map amendment matter. We live right next door to the house that Mr. Pearlie bought at 292 South Arlington. Before I make my comments, I want to thank members of the Zoning and Planning Commission and the Development Planning and Zoning Committee. Although they did not vote the way we would have liked them to have voted, they listened to us and were respectful of our views. I would also like to thank the council members who have met with us over the past two months, and Eileen Franz, who's been helpful throughout this process. I first became involved in this matter because I thought if the map amendment was denied, 292 South Arlington would be saved. I was wrong. A few weeks ago, Mr. Pearlie came to my home to discuss things. He was cordial, but made clear that 292 South Arlington was going to be demolished no matter what. Either he was going to prevail in his requested map amendment and build a new home on the consolidated lot, or he would lose on his request, and he would build two new homes on the two separate lots. I believe him, and am convinced that if he loses today, he will follow through to build two homes on the lot. I have withdrawn my protest primarily because it's become clear to me that even if the map amendment is denied, 292 Arlington will be demolished. So, why am I still here? I understand that on the evening Mr. Pearlie came to my home, he also visited Amy Wheeler and Jim Schutz. Mr. Pearlie told Jim that young people do not value these older homes, and in response to a hypothetical question from Jim, indicated he would have no hesitancy demolishing the William Emery home across the street at 284 South Kennelworth. The Emery House is the first home built in our area. It was constructed in 1889 and is one of the most historically significant homes in all of Elmhurst. The Granacki Study describes it as an outstanding example of a picturesque queen anne with all the hallmark elements of the style. It was, of course, designated an historically significant home by the study. I do not relay this exchange to criticize Mr. Pearlie, but rather to show that even our most treasured historic homes remain vulnerable and stand unprotected. Although the overwhelming majority of residents in Elmhurst would be appalled at the demolition of the Emery home, a single person with means can override the will of the community and deprive us all of our significant historic assets. That's not right. If the law does not protect these homes, we must find a way to strengthen our laws so they do. I hope each of you share our views that historically significant homes are worth saving. If you do, we look forward to collaborating with you on more effective laws and processes to preserve these homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Schultz.
Mayor, I think I'm going to have to shrink instead of grow. My name is Jim Schutz, and I'm a member of the newly formed group Citizens for Elmhurst Preservation. We're a group of citizens who want to safeguard the distinctive, character, history, and architectural integrity of Elmhurst through historic preservation, planning, and sensible growth. Over the past eight weeks, we have received much input from fellow residents, not just in our neighborhood, but across all of Elmhurst. That input is overwhelmingly in favor of preserving Elmhurst's historical structures and unique character. As of today, 1,371 people have signed our petition. Almost 150 homes are displaying Preserve Elmhurst signs in their yards. Nearly 170 people have joined our Facebook group or email list. Many residents have made public statements at city meetings and are writing emails to the city in support of preservation. We have spoken at the two Zoning and Planning Commission meetings and at the two Development, Planning, and Zoning Committee meetings. Both groups have told us they believe that preservation is important to Elmhurst's long-term character, charm, and vitality, that we are raising important issues and asking the right questions. Both groups encouraged us to continue with our efforts. We have spoken with most of you, our elected aldermen, and you told us that you also believe in the importance of preservation. Many of you thanked us for our passion and for highlighting this issue. We appreciate your support. We believe that we have awakened the public and have shared the public voice with the city officials. We plan to continue our efforts. Our question for you is, what is the best path forward? How do we move from the public providing input to the city, to the city deciding that change is required and important, and then to the city taking action? It seems to us that the ball is now in your court to respond to what your constituents are asking. We are a group of optimists. Our communications have called for our elected officials, city staff, and residents to work together to change our trajectory related to historical home and green space preservation. We believe that working together, we can preserve Elmhurst's cultural, history, character, and charm, just as other cities are doing throughout Illinois and the country. Will you join us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy O'Neil.
Jim, thank you for the height of the microphone. Okay. Is this okay? All right. Hi, my name is Kathy O'Neil. I'm a resident from Elmhurst from the age of three to seven. Now, I'm unfortunately 67, and I've been back for 12 years. I live at 240 Moni St. Charles, which is considered a stockbroker's tutor. It was built in 1929, the first year of the Depression. It is a money pit, and I love it. On that note, I'm taking a little bit different approach. I always lead with an emotional foot. I am heartbroken, devastated, I will sob, you'll have to call someone to drag me off the lawn at 292. That comes from the heart. The other side of that coin is our committee that we have started up, we're very passionate about preserving Elmhurst's historical homes. I have sat by and watched and photographed and cried curbside when I've seen orange fences go up, hoping that windows are going to be replaced because they've been removed, landscaping is going to be replaced because it's been torn out. This is how I sum up what we're dealing with right now. I believe the lovers of the historical homes collectively, we are the bears. We love our community. As bears, we assumed no one is going to continue to take down our homes. So, we watched a couple go down along the way, and we were like, wait, this can't be happening. It's continued to happen. The Pearleys, lovely family, they unfortunately poked the bear. They are the tipping point. Now, we stand up, we wake up, and we say, I'm coming out of hibernation. I come out of hibernation to a stream of salmon. I'm naive, I feel protected. However, we woke up out of hibernation to the Pearleys saying, this lovely home is going down, this is not our vision. And we're like, wait, you can't take a bear's house down. How dare you take a bear's house down? They have done absolutely nothing wrong. They bought that property, as we've been told, the land is the land. They have total rights within city limits, laws, to do with whatever they'd like to with that home. I respect that. I am totally overwhelmed and disgusted that we collectively, as a community, have been asleep at a wheel.
Excuse me. You're at three and a half minutes. I'd ask if you'd...
I'm so, forgive me.
That's all right.
Forgive me. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
If you would wrap it up, that's all right.
That's it. I could go on for another hour. I'm sorry. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Jonathan Keenan.
I didn't have a whole lot prepared to say tonight, but I just thought I'd come up and ask, just from like a younger person's perspective, of someone who was born here in Elmhurst, raised here in Elmhurst, and has lived here my whole life. Part of the reason why I came back to Elmhurst after college was because I love this community and I love this town. Part of the reason why I love this town is because of the architecture and the diversity that we have. And I am worried that if we continue to go around and consolidate lots, that we will lose a lot of our older homes, a lot of our natural green spaces, a lot of our old growth trees, and build them with massive houses with huge in-ground swimming pools, lose a lot of water retention, have more places flood, and lose a lot of the natural beauty that Elmhurst has. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn McCready.
Hi, I'm Lynn McCready, and I live at 440 South Kennelworth here in Elmhurst. Thank you for letting me to speak. Thirty years ago, my husband and I sought to leave downtown Chicago to purchase a house in the suburbs. Each weekend, we would load our bicycles into cars and explore the surrounding area looking for a new hometown. Park Ridge, Oak Park, Northbrook, they all had something to offer. But when we arrived in Elmhurst with its tree-lined streets, its quaint downtown with the old movie theater, and the wide variety of unique houses, we fell in love. Every resident we spoke to told us they'd lived in Elmhurst their entire lives, or they'd left only to come back. Elmhurst was going to be our forever home. But now, after raising two children and living in three different homes, I've grown concerned that the very things that have drew me to Elmhurst in the first place are slowly but inexplicably disappearing. In 1994, we were able to afford, as twenty-somethings, a small Cape Cod starter home to begin our family. That home is long gone, torn down and replaced by a 4,300-square-foot house that is estimated at $1.7 million today, far, far out of reach of any first-time home buyer. Our next home, built in 1929, is still standing. However, the small brick ranch next door to it was torn down and replaced with a three-story wall placed right up against the property line. It completely blocks the view of the prairie path that we had had, and that had made our home bright and beautiful. We literally sold that house and moved to our current residence because we knew that was going to happen eventually, and we wanted to get out before it did. Time again, I've despaired when older homes were demolished, trees lost, and green space sacrificed for livable square footage. But I would console myself that some houses were simply too small for modern families or too outdated or in need of too much repair. Now, however, it seems that even those homes that are most responsible for giving Elmhurst its history and charm are no longer safe from the bulldozer. And the last year, we watched the historic home at 239 Clermont be destroyed, along with its charming phone closet, the music room where famous musicians played, and the carriage portico chair that speaks of its history. And this, after the renovated Blue Beauty at 218 South Kennelworth was knocked down, its wraparound porch gone forever. You can imagine my level of horror when I learned that the century-old home at 292 South Arlington is scheduled to be torn down. Very soon, its lovely, unique details will become debris dumped in a landfill, replaced by whatever HDTV trend is currently in style, lawns and gardens lost to square footage. Our current house was built in 1915 and is this year's kit home. For over a century, the people who've lived in it have tended it, making repairs and updates with the expectation that it will be enjoyed by families well into the future. Now, we are almost certain that when we sell it, it will be bulldozed into a landfill, our double-wide lot too tempting for someone willing to spend millions of dollars to put a mansion in its place. I'm asking you, as our representatives, to stop this trend that values increased property tax revenues over history and uniqueness. Buyers should be incentivized to buy and maintain older homes and greatly disincentivized to tear them down. Certainly, no one should be approving requests for changes in the law to make this easier. If I had my way, a punitive destruction tax would be imposed on anyone seeking to remove anything in our town that is irreplaceable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Barbara Lonergan.
Barbara Lonergan, I'm speaking on behalf of Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition. We have shared these comments with the zoning commission, the zoning committee. We've also submitted them as written comments, and we think they're worth sharing again. We understand how the zoning commission and committee have to look at the map amendment, but we're asking the council, who is looking at the bigger picture? And in this case, we consider some of the issues as bigger picture to include historic preservation, stormwater management, and a tree ordinance. The Elmhurst Historic Preservation Commission is tasked with protecting, enhancing, and perpetuating those historical and architecturally significant structures, buildings, sites, objects, and areas valued by the city and its residents that are significant to the city's history, culture, and architecture, preserving community character, encouraging respect for the past, and providing a historical context for the city. Before we lose additional historic homes to new development, we'd appreciate if the city would reevaluate whether its Historic Preservation Commission is able to effectively fulfill its role, or if roadblocks have been put in place to create a commission that has limited influence and no authority in the preservation of Elmhurst's historic architecture. Currently, HPC's evaluation of historic buildings at risk of demolition is not even part of the pre-permitting process. Without advanced notification and discussion, renovation versus redevelopment recommendations cannot realistically be taken into consideration. In addition to reassessing the HPC's role in building review and permitting, we would like the city to consider if HPC is sufficiently funded and supported to educate the public on Elmhurst's history and historic preservation. In addition to the home at 292, there are a number of mature trees housed on the two lots that provide significant value to the environment, the property, stormwater remediation, and potentially a new structure proposed on this land. A tree inventory shows a decrease in Elmhurst's tree canopy, and every time another new home replaces one of these smaller homes, or in this case, takes a green lot and builds on it, the amount of impervious surfaces increase, the number of larger mature trees decreases, our heat island increases, and natural stormwater infrastructure or green infrastructure decreases. While we don't know the property owner's plans for the existing trees at 292, we encourage the city, which is named after Alms and has 70% of its trees located on private property, to consider the irreplaceable value these existing trees have and to create a tree ordinance to discourage removal of mature trees on private property. We've provided examples of tree ordinances from nearby communities in our previous written comment to the zoning commission and committee, and can provide additional documentation for your review. We also don't know what type of stormwater retention will be required for this property, but with most of Elmhurst's new builds, the plan is to maximize lot coverage, increase impervious surfaces, and reduce green space. In addition to stormwater remediation, we encourage the city to consider implementing impact fees.
Lonergan, you're at three and a half minutes. Would you bring your comments to a close?
Sure. We encourage the city to consider implementing impact fees to offset the cost of growth in relation to new development and to offset the negative impacts of new builds on our existing overburdened infrastructure. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Kristy Anaj. I hope I'm saying the name right.
Hi, my name is Kristy Ainge. I've lived in Elmhurst for eight years now. I'm here to comment on the zoning case 24PO5, the rezoning and consolidation of 292 Arlington. First, I request the City Council reject the ZNP report because it is incomplete. The report does not include comments from the Director of Public Works, Superintendent of Building Construction, or Fire Chief. The comments and recommendations from these individuals are required for all plat of subdivisions per the City Code, Chapter 23, Article 23, 07A1C. Second, I submitted comments and statistics regarding this case, and I wanted to summarize a few of those statistics tonight. First, the argument for rezoning is that one RE is more restrictive than a combined RE and R1. The proposed plans are only 3% less structure usage than a maximum combined RE and R1. A combined RE is only 2% more restrictive than the existing RE and R1. Second, the proposed plans for consolidation occupy 23% of the overall combined lots. The existing three structures occupy 11% of the combined lots, resulting in a significant loss of open space and an increase in current structure density. Third, there are 21 parcels in the RE district east of York Road with the same-sized parcel, including RE lot at 292 Arlington, and there are an additional 12 parcels that are slightly larger or slightly smaller. The parcels in this neighborhood are already uniform. Approving this case would make the parcels less uniform to the RE district and neighborhood. Fourth, while the consolidating the lots would match one neighbor's lot size, this consolidation will make the property not match another neighbor's lot size, making the argument for uniformity contradict itself. Fifth, the information found is contradictory to the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 6, for housing, which addresses maintaining a variety of housing stock, including affordable housing. Paraphrasing the code, the zoning chapter is based on the idea that each district is created to accomplish a specific purpose and to encourage a particular type of development to protect that development from being encroached upon by incompatible types of development. I believe to justify rezoning R1 to RE should look at more than just the land use per the Comprehensive Plan. It should also demonstrate how this rezoning is abundantly beneficial to the community of Elmhurst as a whole by addressing Chapter 6 of the Comprehensive Plan, because right now, the listed benefits are matching one neighbor and being 3% less land usage than one home built on each lot at maximum land usage. I hope you have had a chance to read my comments in detail. They're kind of long. They are filed under the June 10 DPZ written comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
All right. That concludes the list of those who have signed in to make public comment this evening. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment but did not have the opportunity to sign in? All right. In the striped shirt first.
Hi, my name is Monica Cook. I'm at 320 South Kennelworth, and I think most everybody covered things that are important to me, but I would just like to put a fine point on the decision of the map amendment. I respect the want for you, when you cast your votes, not to change things midstream, why this project and not the ones that have gone before it, and I think that's laudable. I think in your roles, that should be something that you consider strongly. However, I think it's a very dangerous precedent to start allowing all over Elmhurst the merging of two different lots, regardless of what zones they are. But the larger and larger and the more consolidated we allow lots to become, the larger and larger the homes that will be placed on it, and the more priced-out first-time homeowners will be, people looking to downsize but stay in the community, people hoping maybe to have aging parents come and join them. We're going to lose the opportunity of lots that would be conducive to these kinds of builds if we start merging lots. I think I understand that this is a bit of an unprecedented request. It's not something that's been asked of you often to merge multiple lots. And in the interest of not wanting to change horses midstream, I might point to you that this is the beginning of a stream and a bit of a dangerous precedent. If we say yes to merging these lots, why won't we do this over and over and over again? You all might not care about historic preservation, but as referenced by the Comprehensive Plan, diversity of housing stock, particularly to attract a diverse economic community, is something that you are on record as supporting, and I just don't understand how merging these two lots is conducive to that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another individual that wanted to speak? Please proceed to the microphone.
I live on the north side, and I haven't been in town a lot lately, and I'm very sad when I come home and I see what's happened to Elmhurst. The large houses, the knockdowns, even downtown, you just look up. It's all condos or apartment buildings. It's lost the coziness, the quaintness. I think it's very sad, and I guess I don't understand that nobody is recognizing this other than the people living here that have gotten up and spoken tonight. I applaud you all. I don't know statistics or anything, but I think I know what's right and what's wrong and what's happening to the town I moved to 21 years ago. It's not the same. It doesn't feel like a real community. Unfortunately, we don't have the land space other communities have, but maybe you want to be Hinsdale, but I'm sorry, we're not. You can't make us any larger. Actually, we're kind of being crushed. Actually, we're kind of being crushed because we take our standard lot and we put a giant on it. So I just wish you would stop and think a little bit more and not keep asking for more money, because I would think what has been built should already be paying for some stuff that you want us small homeowners to foot the bill for. It's sad, and I've said it in the past, learn from our government in DC and in Springfield. Spend what you have. Don't keep taxing the heck out of us. I sure appreciate it. I want to continue to stay in Elmhurst, but it's getting harder and harder, not just for the money, but what I see around me. It's a beautiful, small town, and we're lucky to have it. I think it would be great if it stayed that way, a little while longer anyway, while I'm around. Thank you, and thank you all for everything you've said, and you're a very wise young man. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? All right, just for the record, and if you haven't made public comment, we do not respond. We've read the comments. We've heard what has been said. I will probably have some comments, but not until after the vote is taken. You don't have to stay around, but we are going to move on to the agenda in our consent agenda. I'm sorry, are there any announcements from the dais? All right, being done, we will move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, if you will read the consent agenda, please.
5.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on June 3, 2024. 5.2 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on June 17, 2024. 5.3 accounts payable July 1, 2024. 5.4, reappointment of Susan Sadowski, Ingrid Beckton, and William Ryan to the Board of Trustees, Elmhurst Public Library. 5.5, referral, discount of vehicle stickers for military veterans. 5.6, report case 24ZBA05, Prue and Sideyard setback variation 370 North Addison. 5.7, report case number 24POZ Honda conditional use for Pyle and and PUD 300 West Grand Avenue. 5.8, report case number 24PO5, Parelli map amendment 292 South Arlington. 5.9, report Jackson Elementary School PTA fundraiser request. 5.10, an ordinance amending section 44.92 entitled Stop Intersections enumerated of Article 6 entitled Special Stops of Chapter 44 entitled Motor Vehicles in Traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. 5.11, an ordinance authorizing execution of an extended-term agreement, Amendment Number One, by and between McSquared Energy Services, LLC, and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.12, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for custodial maintenance of parking decks and pedestrian tunnels project. 5.13, a resolution authorizing the purchase of Rox Salt for use within the City of Elmhurst. And 5.14, a resolution rejecting all bids for the Elmhurst History Museum Public Performance Base construction bids in the City of Elmhurst, Illinois.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either for the purpose of further discussion or for voting against? Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. 5.8.
5.8. Anyone else? Alderman Erby?
5 dot 11, and Alderman Deuter pulled 5 dot A, correct?
It's already been pulled.
Thank you. 5 11, that'll be great. Thank you.
All right, I have anything else to remove from the consent agenda other than 5.8 and 5.11? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 5.8 and 5.11? Alderman Bastido with the motion. Alderman Cahill with the second. Clerk Tamer?
Hill?
Aye.
Shanko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Udara absent.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda minus 5.8 and 5.11 is approved. Moving to 5.8, Clerk Tamer, would you please read the report?
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve a map amendment from R1 single-family residence to RE residential estate for PIN 0601319007 and plat of subdivision consolidation of PINs 0601319006 and 0601319007 at the property commonly known as 292 South Arlington Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Sign, Alderman Marty Deuter, Chair, and Alderman Jennifer Veremis, Vice Chair, and Alderman Tina Park.
I have a motion to approve 5.8. Alderman Deuter with the motion. Alderman Veremis with the second. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. This committee report is related to a zoning application for a map amendment from R1 single-family residence to RE residential estate for one parcel and a plat of subdivision, actually a consolidation, of that parcel and the parcel immediately to the north, which is 292 Arlington. While the zoning case is fairly straightforward, there were a number of policy issues raised by members of the public, and my comments tonight are going to be longer than normal for that reason, so please bear with me. I'd like to begin by expressing my appreciation to the Zoning and Planning Commission and to my colleagues on the DPZ committee. The commission's hearing occurred over two meetings, and the transcripts of the hearing and deliberations were 180 pages. Members of DPZ carefully reviewed the transcripts and all materials presented by the applicant and the public. We discussed the case over two meetings, and like the commission, we are unanimously recommending approval of the map amendment and consolidation. The property owner of 292 Arlington bought two parcels that for decades have appeared and operated as one. Going forward, he would like to continue to treat the two parcels as one. Because the underlying zoning of the two parcels is different, R1 for the south parcel and RE for the north parcel, the two parcels are not able to be combined through an administrative action, as would otherwise be the case. To consolidate these two parcels, the underlying zoning of one must first be changed, and the process to make that change is a map amendment. As indicated by our city code, map amendments are assessed based on four considerations. These considerations are related to the existing uses and zoning of the area and property in question and consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. The commission considered each point and concluded that the map amendment should be approved. The commission noted that the use going forward noted that the use going forward will continue to be single-family residential and that the combined lot will have 150 feet of frontage, which is characteristic of the RE district. The commission also noted that RE is the more conservative of the two districts with greater setback requirements and lower maximum lot coverage. The commission also conclude that the plat of subdivision consolidation is appropriate, meets the intent of the subdivision ordinance, and should be approved. The commission noted that the combined dimension will match the parcel to the east. Some members of the public have suggested that the council's action on the zoning case should take into consideration broader policy issues. What's before us tonight is a zoning case. For the protection of the property owners and the community, zoning cases are evaluated using very specific criteria. Property demolition and tree preservation are not considerations for the zoning case. It's also worth noting that regardless of any of our personal preferences and also regardless of the outcome of this zoning case, consistent with existing city code, the owner of 292 Arlington may apply for and be granted a demolition permit and may choose to remove any and all existing trees on the property. We cannot apply policies or standards to this case that differ from our existing policies. Approval of the zoning case does not negate the value of any of the policy issues raised. I want to thank the residents who participated in this zoning case. We received extensive input, and all four meetings were well-attended. Here's what we heard. Our community values historic structures, and there is dismay at the potential loss of another. The community does not want to lose old trees. The community is concerned with the loss of housing options, and the community values open space. Members of the committee express support for many of the preferences shared. Going forward, several policy issues that indirectly relate to the zoning case may and arguably should be raised and debated, including historic preservation and the role in composition of the Historic Preservation Commission, tree preservation and protection, housing options, architectural standards, deconstruction incentives, and the sustainability of new construction. I encourage the aldermen and members of the public to pursue policy changes that they believe are in the community's interest. There is always room for improvement. To understand the foundation that we may choose to build on in the future, I want to share a few pieces of information related to historic preservation. There are currently five properties that have been designated as historic landmarks by the City of Elmhurst. Those five are Gloss Mansion, Gloss Mausoleum, 208 Arlington, 301 Arlington, and 315 West St. Charles. Owner consent is required for each designation. One additional property at 259 Cottage Hill was designated, but subsequently, the owner petitioned to have the designation removed. There are five additional properties in Elmhurst that are on the National Register of Historic Places. Two Walter Burley Griffin homes, both on Arlington, and the Frank Lloyd Wright home on Kennelworth, the Old Main Building on the university campus, and the Churchville Schoolhouse. Three of the homes on the National Register are protected by preservation easements. We've heard a lot about the Historic Preservation Commission, and I look forward to hearing more about the ways the commission may be strengthened and energized. Among the commission's past accomplishments were two neighborhood architectural surveys, the Arlington-Kennelworth area completed in 2010, and the York-Cottage-Hill area completed in 2016. Following the 2016 survey, the commission invited all property owners in the two areas to an event co-hosted with Landmarks Illinois to share the survey findings and encourage preservation efforts. According to city staff, that meeting was well-attended. Thank you to the members of the commission for their past work, and I hope the commission is able to build on the momentum that has been created by this case and the community input. Lastly, I want to address stormwater, which was the subject of a few comments. Elmhurst currently requires any development that increases the amount of impervious surface to hold the increased stormwater runoff on site. This policy was passed for single-family homes in 2014 and will apply to any redevelopment that may occur at 292 Arlington. I will close by reminding the council that before us is a map amendment and consolidation request, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Additional discussion? Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to give great appreciation for the DBC team to my right here, Marty Deuter, Chair, and Veremis, and Tina Park. They had a hard, difficult task ahead of them when the ZPZ came up with their report or their commission recommendation, and there's a lot to this case, and I was called up by some of the constituents. I have no idea what zoning is about. That's why I'm on finance. I have no business being in zoning, so I had to educate myself. So it's been a whirlwind tour. I've gone through a 101 four-hour class, and it's been quite interesting and educational. What we have tonight is pretty much exactly what Chair Deuter said, is that this is a land use case. It's a map amendment. It's section 22.25 in our ordinance. We have a chapter for historical preservation called Chapter 21. I will not probably be touching on that tonight. I'm going to stay focused on 22.25, because that's what we're voting on here tonight. There is 23, section 23, for the final plat of survey. That has another set of issues and discussion points. I'm going to try to stay focused with 22.25 map amendment. Map amendment is a nice word in zoning for rezoning. They really mean the same thing. What we have here with 22.25 is a unique part of our code. It's the highest pinnacle of our zoning code. It doesn't require, we have, you know, variances and conditional uses that sit at a much lower level of what has to be done on council or ZPZ when those cases do come through. With our new CAMROS update, as it's proposed right now, I think a 10% variance or less. If I say something wrong, you can stop me, Chair Deuter, on that. As that stands right now, those will be automatically done with a single-level stop. There won't be a two-point. Right now, you know, everything goes to ZPZ when there's a variance, whether it's 1%, whatever it is. If it's a variance, it gets a case number. It has one like this one does, 24PO5. It'd be very similar. Goes through ZPZ, they write a report, it comes to the DPZ council or council, and then we come to full council and we vote on it. Then we have an ordinance. This one is a little unique. All those other ones I spoke of have a right, the owner, the Parellis, have a right to come and ask for that. They can easily show a simple hardship, and that allows them to gain their variance. Those are much easier. Now we're talking about a map amendment tonight, and I didn't know much about a map amendment four weeks ago, so I spoke with a ex-mayor of Elmhurst. He gave me a history. How did we get here? Well, in 1991 and prior, we were taken to Wheaton in a zoning case, and we lost two of them. The first one was the same judge as the second one. We arrived, and the judge was not quite happy with Elmhurst and said, "You will need to make a consent decree. You will need to come back in one year or less, and you will need to have a true zoning map that has something I can make a judgment on as a judge." And so at that point, we were all A-coded on our residential. When we came back to the judge, we had a nice set of finding or judge, or not judge, set of ordinances, section 22.25, chapter 22, chapter 21 hadn't been done yet in 92. That didn't come until 2006. So the point of that is, the judge approved the zoning map. So when all the constituents, all of us here on council, and all the rest of the residents come into town, the zoning map is predicted to be static, and if it does change, there better be a real, really good reason. That's why the map amendment has much different clauses to it and has a higher level of achievement before you can issue it. So now we have REs, we have R1s, we have R2s, we have Cs, we had I, we have Is. Some of those have sub-points. So that map is a beautiful map, and we rely heavily on it. That happened, that map came about in 1992, 32 years ago. Since that time, there has not been a single residential to ending residential case that anyone can identify, myself, or the ask of staff, or anyone else in the history, in the History Foundation, the History Museum. This is the first time in 32 years we are ruling on a map amendment from a residential code of RE or R1 or R2 that's going to stay in the R-codes. This is the first time. This is going to set precedent, or it will not set precedent. So my discussion up here is simply to say, let's put identifying marker in the sand. We will have a vote, and we'll decide if we're going to go forward or not with this map amendment. But it will be the first time in 32 years for a residential home. So now let's dig into the code, if you allow me to. So I think I've established the uniqueness of our map amendment at a high level. It's the only one in the code where we can either deny or approve. Spelled out clearly in the code, the other codes do not have that language. 22.25 is the only one that has a preamble. If you allow me to read that, I'll read it to you. Section A of the map amendment says, "Authority Declaration of Public Policy for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare, conserving the value of property throughout the community, and lessening or avoiding congestion in the public streets and highways. The city council may, from time to time, in the manner hereafter set forth, amend the regulations imposed in the districts created by this chapter or amend district boundary lines," emphasis added, "district boundary lines. Provided that all and all am mendatory ordinances adopted under the authority of this section, due allowances," emphasis added again, "due allowances, shall be made for existing conditions, the conservation of property values, the direction property values, the direction of building," bear with me, "development in accordance with the comprehensive plan, comma, again, the highest emphasis, the uses to which this property is devoted at the time of the adoption of such am mendatory ordinance." Now, I'm not a lawyer, I'm a layman. But what due allowances were in the ZPZ deliberations with a strict land-use doctrine. Far as I know from reading the transcripts, very little to none. In the land-use doctrine that the ZPZ came up with, there was no house on that property on the north line. There were no trees on the south line. There was no grass. The rain didn't fall. The sun didn't come up. The sun did not set. It was just a pure map with two parcels. That was what they made their decision on. I respect that. That meant that the comprehensive plan didn't really come into high play. It came in at a very low level to, "It's a single-family home," is what the comprehensive plan said. I believe, I beg to differ, that when you do a search in the comprehensive plan, it has more hits on land use than any other term other than "and" and "the" in the comprehensive plan of 2009, if I correct me if I get that wrong. And then the third or the fourth caveat is not detrimental to the public interest. So after you get the 1, 2, 3, 4 standards established, then you have to say, "Did anything become detrimental to the public interest?" ZPC said, "You know what? Since it's just land, it doesn't rain, there's no water, there's no house, there's no history here. It's just two lots, let's just get simple with this." I respect that because that's what the map amendment says. It doesn't talk about a house. Simply says the land use, or "the use," as I read earlier in that extra emphasis added back to the preamble. So that is where we are with the map amendment, Section 22.25A. What's next? Well, now we have the ability to have a written protest. No other sections in the code that I'm aware of, except for the reversal of a ZPC case where DPZ and the council want to go opposite flow, then you have a 2/3s, 1/3. Written protest has the same thing with no opposite flow. There's no rationale behind a written protest. It's a simple, "I'm filing a written protest because I don't like it. You've just got to comply with the section of the code." A little bit wordy and needs some legal help, but it's there, and that's what we have tonight. So that is what a map amendment is. Now, you're wondering, "What is so important about the map?" Well, each zone has a round circle or a, if I poured water into it, it would hold water. It would be a complete circle. It may not be a circle round perfect, but it would be a three-dimensional or two-dimensional, full-circled item that comes around and connects back to where it started. And that happens for all the zones. So if we do the map amendment tonight, and we change that line, that R1 to RE or RE to R1 or R1 to R2, you can see there's three times two, six permutations there. Any of those are never been done because they never stayed in R. We've gone to commercial-industrial. I admit that, but this is a first R. We're playing right on the fence line. I can come in with whatever amount of money I have, if I can afford it. We heard some issues out here with affordability. We're working on that. I could come in with a large amount of money, and I can buy a house in the middle of the zone, and that becomes an administrative lot combination. That means I do not need to go to ZPZ. I don't have to come to the council. I put up a fence. If I want to tear both houses down, if there's both green, whatever, I own that land. As long as I comply with the ordinances, I'm good to go. And that might have been what the Pirellis thought when they came in. I don't know. I wasn't in that meeting with city. And so I do have an empathy for the Pirellis tonight. So we are not in the middle of this zone. We are on the edge. Literally, one part of the parcel's on the one side of the fence, and the other's in the other zone. And so as soon as we change that zone tonight, that means that zone has changed. And you're wondering, "Well, what's the big deal with that, Alderman Erby?" Well, as resources come into their RE zone, where it's the most expensive, money can buy any one of the people, any one of the lots along that edge between RE and R1, and they can tear down both houses between both zones. As of tonight, 32-year standing since 1992, that has never happened. Tonight, I don't know what's going to happen. We're going to find out in the vote. So you can see what's going to happen. It's going to gobble up like Langoliers, like Pac-Man. Over time, those REs are going to spread out because the larger money's going to come into the RE zone, and they're going to buy into the R1 zones and consolidate them with no problem after tonight because the precedent will be set. So that is the map amendment that we're talking about tonight.
Alderman Erby.
Go ahead.
Mayor. We have, and I really have never invoked this, but we have a five-minute limitation per speaker on our rules, and you're about at 10, so I want to ask first...
I'll turn back the mic to you.
All right. Since I don't get to talk right now, I'll say, "Does anyone else have further discussion on this? We might come back around then." Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm of the opinion, you know, we can't change our codes, our laws, on the fly. I believe the commission, I believe the DPC committee deliberated on 292 Arlington to following the interpreting the code for the city. For that reason, I'll be supporting the report this evening. That said, I do believe there's an opportunity to review the process and guidelines for establishing historical designation, but I don't think we can do it, you know, in parallel with this particular case. So I support the report, and I do appreciate the residents and their point of view. I think there's a lot of valid points that the city needs to consider and figure out how we might, you know, change how we do things for the future. But that's for another day, and I look forward to being part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chair Deuter. 2/3 of the things that I wanted to point out, you have already walked through and far more eloquently than I would have, so thank you. I'm not on zoning, and I followed this more closely than other things that are outside of my committee. I attended both of the halves of the commission chaired by Susan Rose, who is very deliberative and principled in the walking through of the issues between land use and then ultimately a more sort of political or policy-minded decision that, as it arrives to council. If we could force people to buy and do with their land what we'd want, I would keep that house. I love that house. It's a beautiful old house. I have fond memories of that neighborhood. I've been inside the Frank Lloyd Wright house. It's an amazing place. But of course, that's not our job, and voting for this map amendment is not voting for teardowns. This is not a way to prevent a teardown. This is not a way to keep the intangibles that make Elmhurst great, to keep them, the trees, the parkways, a Frank Lloyd Wright house, the proximity to Chicago, our schools. This is a map amendment, and facts matter, and there is a series of criteria that have to be checked off, and they were. And the Phillips House is now the Pirelli House. And where we may lose a beautiful old home, we gain EAV, and maybe in another case, it will go the other way. As far as being on the watchtower for historic preservation, there is a commission, and if the bear has been awakened, then it would be a good thing for the city to engage more fully in keeping its eye on some of its great old properties. But this is a map amendment, and I believe we are doing the right thing. I support it.
Thank you. All right. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. A lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. I agree with Alderman Brennan's comments, Chair Deuter's comments, some of Alderman Erby's comments, and as well as Alderman Nardini's. One of the things I wanted to touch base on is what Alderman Erby stated, and maybe not intended to imply, but I took it as an implication of, "We set a precedent here today, and therefore, we have to be worried or concerned on what we do today because this may be happening all throughout town." I personally do not believe that. It's been said many a times up here on council, each property is unique, and therefore, we evaluate each property individually. So that doesn't mean that here at 292 Arlington, that what may or may not happen here tonight is going to continue on in any or all zoning districts. So to me, this isn't a precedent. I do support this map amendment. I do also, and I might sound like I'm being hypocritical here, but I also agree with a lot of what the residents have to say. I think we do need to revisit our current historic preservation ordinance. I think we do need to revisit the commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and see what their role is. Should it be stronger? Should we change it? Concerns over stormwater, trees, et cetera. Agree on all those points, but as some of the aldermen have stated already, that is not what, at least I am looking at here tonight. I am looking at, "Does this meet the criteria for a map amendment?" I'd have greater concern if they were taking a property the reverse way versus R1 to RE, going from RE to R1. But in this case, I don't see any issues with any of the conditions either in the zoning planning commission or the committee, so I do support the map amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else before we do a round two? Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I still have more than two minutes, or five minutes, or 10 minutes? How much do I get?
Well, you've had your five, but go ahead and see where we go.
So I've already exceeded 2X, so I better cut it back.
I would say it would be helpful, but, you know, say what you have to say, and we'll see where it goes.
All right. I thank you, Mayor, for your indulgence. Back to tonight with what we're voting. The 22.25 says in the last paragraph, the land use. So remember in our ZPC, remember ZPC rolled into DPZ, they concurred with a report. In the transcripts, detriment to the common good or common interest was not discussed and said, "Since it's just land, there is no detriment that we need to worry about." That was the general consensus with the land use doctrine. That is not what the code says, what's applicable to us on council. We should be looking beyond the doctrine or the land use doctrine. We should put the house there. We should look at the trees there. We should realize the sun does rise and set. We should realize there's rain. And when you do that, then we can go look at the comprehensive plan, which is standard 4 in the map amendment. So when you read the transcripts, you'll see they did not use standard 4 because it was a strict view of land use only. We on council have the ability to expand our horizons and view this holistically and actually follow the code, and let's bring in standard 4. Let's bring in the comprehensive plan, which is standard 4. Let's evaluate, is there any detriment to the common good? Because that has not been done effectively. That's why we're here on council. That's why we heard the comments here tonight. That's why I'm representing those comments as best I can, as reading the code. And I would like to go through that standard and say, "Well, how does the comprehensive plan address land use?" Well, it tells you, "We shouldn't be doing this." That's the Ainge report. Kristi Ainge got up and spoke, and she completely takes out the uniformity case, and the open space, and the arguments in Mr. Pirelli's application are negated materially and fully to my liking. I can't attest to your liking. I'm not going to try to push my liking onto your liking, but when I measure those and what's in that report, in the Ainge report, it clearly says the applicant has failed to me, and the comprehensive plan wins, and the detriments exceed any benefit. And remember, there is no benefit needed. There is no detriment, I mean, there's no right, and there is no hardship with the map amendment. It is unique. So I really don't want to try to plant the standards that you guys are thinking about, maybe that you're used to. This has not happened for 32 years. That is why. So I implore everybody to at least read the code and apply the standards, 1, 2, 3, 4, and find out, is there a detriment or not? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Alderman Erby. Alderman Nardini.
Thanks much. I appreciate Alderman Erby bringing up Mrs. Ainge's letter. It was, in all the things I read, the most compelling argument against the case. However, in dealing with staff, the arguments that she made were correct, in my opinion, against uniformity, most, the strongest one, but that is immaterial to the application. The commission and the committee look at the four criteria irrespective of an application correctly or incorrectly submitted. I buy the things mentioned in the Ainge letter. They do not overturn the criterion that this map amendment is appropriately positioned with.
All right. Anyone else? Alderman Veremis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment to add. A map amendment can be requested without any reason other than to have one zoning classification. That could be requested even if the house wasn't going to be torn down. Just wanted to clarify that.
Alderman Talludo.
I'd like to call the question.
All right. So the procedure on call the question is, Alderman Talludo is saying she would like to terminate debate. I guess we need a, I think we need a second on that. Second Alderman Brennan. We don't, we have one anyway. Alderman Brennan.
So the call the question is a procedure to terminate debate and proceed to a vote. The motion to call the question is non-debatable, so we're either going to vote. If we vote aye on calling the question, we will then proceed to vote on the main issue, which is 292. If the question, calling of the question fails, we will continue on with debate and discussion. Does everyone understand what I've said?
Yes.
Please raise your hand if you don't, yes.
I'm not quite. Could you do that one more time for me, Mayor? Appreciate it.
So the motion is to terminate debate, and that motion is non-debatable, just to make it as confusing as I can. So I'm going to call for the vote, and if the majority votes to terminate debate, we will move on to the main question, which is the ordinance. If the motion fails, we will continue with discussion and debate. All right.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Cahill.
No.
No.
Talludo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Udara, absent.
Bastido.
No.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
No.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Nine ayes, four nays, one absent.
Nine ayes, four nays, one absent. The motion succeeds, so we are now going to move on to a vote on the issue. So take a moment, collect your thoughts, and we're going to be voting on the ordinance.
The report.
I'm sorry, the report. Beg your pardon, beg your pardon. This is Report 5.8.
Hill.
Stand by.
Everybody.
I just want to make sure everyone's...
Stand by. I just want to make sure everyone's ready.
Sorry.
All right. So we're voting on the report. Aye or nay for the report to pass or not? All right. Proceed.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Udara, absent. Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Irby.
No.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent. The report passes. As Chair, I do not participate in the debate, but I would like to make some comment. I think this, the situation is a bit of an anomaly so far. And I think that there's been a message, I mean, I look at it procedurally. This is one of those where our commission and our committee and our council have done the job. It's, sometimes we see reports from the commission, which are more difficult. It's seven people there, it's a four-three, and then we get a two-one out of the committee. But this is one where it's been unanimous. I think everyone looks at a difficult situation here and did the hard work, which is not always what the popular result is, but doing what's required. These are difficult, zoning, these kinds of cases are difficult because you're balancing property rights with preservation, which we can't decide tonight. But Chair Rose, you know, actually, I note that it was reported, when I was first an Alderman, back in 2010, that when the first house went in the historic preservation was certified, that the owner was a lead in that process. And then when they had trouble selling their house, they took it off, decertified it. And our ordinance presently is voluntary. It's hard to draw a line between what house qualifies. I hope people wouldn't want my house torn down, because I think it's beautiful. Most people wouldn't have a problem with that. I have a feeling the next owner would not see it the same way I do. And I'm always reminded of Chairman Rose from the commission saying, "I have no problem with regulating taste as long as it's mine." So it gets to be a little difficult. That all being said, I think for the people who've spoken tonight in the letters we've had, it has not fallen on deaf ears. This is the right decision for this case, in my opinion, and the council has approved it. I do think that there's at least a wake-up call for me, when, maybe within the first year when I was mayor, I went to the Historic Preservation Commission to kind of see what was going on. And it didn't seem like there was a whole lot going on. There had been a lot going on, but it seems like there are a whole lot more people interested. So I imagine that after I say this, some of you will turn in applications and say, "I'd like to be considered for the Historic Preservation Commission." And you should. There are some things, as Alderman Deuter pointed out, floodwater really, stormwater doesn't have anything to do with that. We regulate that so that any change is not going to be impacted. I think it's hard, we don't have anything right now that says who can and can't tear down trees at what age. I know that when this came up years ago, people are very protective of their property rights and want to be able to do with their property what they want. And I know a block from me, an owner bought one, had one house, bought the one next door, tore it down, made a bigger house, bought the one next door for a buffer, and bought the one behind it, which is across the street from me. It's like, you know, a little bit disjointed, but those are that person's property rights. That's got to be balanced. I also know that something that was brought up is affordability. This council had undertook its objectives and talked about its plans. We are concerned about what happens when you want to downsize. Are there places to do that? And we are in a project with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, where they've selected to work with Elmhurst, and they will be coming in and lending their expertise to us, to tell us, what's our housing stock about? What can we do about it? Because, you know, that is something that we've heard through the years. And when we had our, you know, whatever we called our retreat, and talked about what are our priorities, that is one of our priorities. So that, it's maybe separate than this. I don't know that, you know, a $2 million house is really going to be downsizing, but, you know, that, there are other issues that really don't tie into this. But I guess I just wanted to conclude to say that we've heard a lot of what was said, and I think a lot of the Aldermen have commented on the fact that historic preservation is coming alive again in a lot of people's minds. And if you're interested, turn it in. I hope that, I imagine, certain Giuliani is going to say, "Mayor admits failure on historic preservation." But the signal is, you know, people get interested in different things, and if there's a true interest, it's something that we will take another look at. With that, we will move on. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we'll go on to the rest of the agenda. Thank you. We're on to 511. Please read the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of an extended term agreement amendment number one, binding between McSquared Energy LLC and the city of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois.
Thank you. We have a motion to put 511 before the council. Yes, Alderman Toledo, and a second by Alderman Jensen. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. I was not the one to pull this, but I'll just reiterate a couple comments that we made during the report process at the last committee or council meeting tonight. This ordinance is recommending a two-year contract renewal for electrical aggregation with MC Squared. As everyone will recall, the electricity will be supplied at the same rate as the comm ed rate, but with the added benefit of utilizing 5% renewable energy credits. This renewable energy credit allows Elmhurst to maintain its EPA green community, green power community designation. I'll also remind everybody that we spoke at the last meeting about the fact that this program originally provided significant cost savings to Elmhurst residents, the aggregation program, but that the market has changed recently over the past couple of years to make it not nearly as competitive for suppliers to compete with the comm ed rate. And so, we received only one proposal from a supplier during this process. And the fact that we received only one proposal from a supplier caused our legal counsel during the normal ordinance drafting process to add the clause for waiving the competitive bid. So the market conditions are such that providing municipal aggregation is not an attractive market, and therefore, there is limited competition for anybody making a proposal for municipal aggregation. So, the program that we are approving tonight is the same program that we approved at the last meeting with the approval of the report. I look forward to your continued support. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Irby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, I pulled this because it had issues, and we had a majority report last time, we had a minority report. We solved that problem. The issues with the current ordinance is it says, whereas a city in MC Squared Energy Services LLC now desire to amend the MPSA with the extended term agreement member amendment number one dated June 2024, the amendment, when you go back and look at 5.1 that it's referencing, the term, here's what it says in the contract, 5.1 term. The agreement commences as of the effective date and is for a term of 12 consecutive monthly billing periods, starting from the initial meter read date designated by the municipality, and the consultation with the supplier in October 2023, expires at the end of the last day of the 12th billing cycle for the participating customers with the last billing cycle, the term. So 5.1, the term, does not have any clauses in this contract that allow for an extended term agreement per our ordinance. That's number one. Number two, I had said during public comments last session, when this came to a vote, that there was a suspension of the rules. And then I was told, no. The mayor said, no, there's no suspension of the rules here, Alderman Irby. I will promise you that in committee, this report had suspension of the rules. Now, whether that's good or bad, right or wrong, I'm not making any judgment, but it surprised me. And so, I want to make that sure, that that was there at committee. There was no waived competitive bidding in the majority report. That was added per Alderman Toledo's comments today. I appreciate that. But those two items were not present during my reading of the report, my deliberations within that report, and my decision not to agree or have consensus with the group of three or four of us. I was the dissenting. And that's respectful, not a problem. So those are the two points I want to make. And the legal review has come back today, and apparently, it's in compliance with our 2012 governance plan. So I want to thank our outside council for coming with that comment. Thank you.
All right. Additional discussion? All right, call the, not call the question, call the roll.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Udara, absent. Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Irby.
No.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent. 511 passes. We move on to reports and recommendations, but point elected officials, Mayor Levin. Neighborhood roll call, 7:00 PM Tuesday at Marion and Lawndale.
None on Thursday because of the holiday.
All right. None on Thursday because of the, okay. The trolley runs Friday and Saturday, noon to midnight. Farmer's Market, reminder, Wednesday. French Market, Sunday. I also want to thank Alderman Toledo for joining me for the ribbon cutting at the vine. It's a very successful project, in my opinion. And it's, all the people, not only the developers who of course thought it was a beautiful project, but the others who, neighbors and others who were there, thought it was very well done. A lot of neighborhood input. I think the developer accommodated the comments, and I look forward to that being a very successful project. They're, I had a schedule in terms of their leasing, so congratulations to them. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items. City Hall will be closed on Thursday for the July 4th holiday, and also trash pickup will be delayed one day. So Thursday pickups will be Friday, Friday will be Saturday. Just wish everybody safe and happy holiday.
Very good. Are there any other reports? Alderman Nardini.
Thanks very briefly. There is Virginia R. Stewart Memorial Fund that has been put together by the Elmhurst Histories Museum, and it is just shy, I believe, of a $30,000 fundraising threshold. She was our first executive director of the museum, and the museum is one of our crown jewels. Anybody, take a look, and please don't hesitate to donate. It would be great to pass that threshold before the 4th.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right. We'll move on to other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan, second Alderman Bram, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and enjoy your holiday. Chair adjourn.